Good evening, everyone. I'll call to authorize the committee of the whole for Tuesday, September 13th, 2022. A local record showed that all aldermen are present. First on our agenda, we have PL 94-22 by Mayor Alio to authorize the transfer of $944 from our general fund contingency to line up on 5110.412 for the costs associated with cleanup week. So based on, unfortunately, the mayor's not here tonight, but based on the feedback, it was a very successful cleanup week, and based on the number of tickets that we had been able to, we were able to sell, and then also the fact that there was no rain when it occurred, so there was nothing sogging everything up and causing the weight to go up. It came in a lot less than expected, so the city home contribution portion is only $944. So typically, that's well over $1,000 that we have to kick in for that, so all in all, better than expected. So any comments or questions on this? Something we do every year. All right. Can I entertain a motion, please?
No motion.
All right, and motion is made by Alderman McCall, seconded by Alderman Witt. All in favor, I oppose. Motion carried, and that is referred to tonight's regular meeting for resolution. Next up, we have PL 96-22 by Mayor Alio to authorize the creation of capital fund number 224 for Fornice Park project. So that kind of coincides with the next PL that's coming up, and it's capital fund. Right now, there is no money going into it, but hopefully, we start to accumulate some money to make improvements over at Fornice Park. Anything else to add to this? This is just more of just setting the fund up.
Correct.
Okay. Any comments or questions on this? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
All right, motion is made by Alderman Panis. Could I go second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman McCall. All in favor, I oppose. Right, motion carried, and that is referred to tonight's regular meeting for resolution as well. And next up, we've got PL 97-22 by Mayor Alio to authorize the mayor to sign and submit an application to Cataracts County for ARPA funds in the amount of $400,000 for lighting upgrades and installation at Fornice Park. If you recall, previous resolution was passed based on estimates for around like $349,000 for lighting upgrades, and I believe Carrie's can give us a better idea. Everyone should receive the actual quotes that they went out and received, and it was more the $204,000, $400,000 to provide lighting on those fields. So I'll turn it over to Carrie.
That is exactly correct. So I had created a draft application and was working with Peggy Root, a Cataracts County official, and submitted the estimating to her. We didn't put it through the legislature for vote. Due to how many ARPA funds come in, they actually made quotes and actual figures. So I worked with the team, the city electricians, to make that happen, and with an increase of goods, we actually made $400,000 as opposed with the $350,000 that was previously presented.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the council on this? Alderman Witt?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, if nobody realized, Field 8 isn't here, but it's because of the electric lines, right? I remember we were told that one time, that they couldn't put the lights on 8.
Yeah, I thought currently if you, it's because of, isn't it the high voltage power lines running behind of it, and it would be the proximity with the poles? So you can't have lights on that field due to the proximity of the active light.
Carrie, all in the best.
Is this, I can't remember if we've actually got a contractor set yet for this, or is it still in just design?
It would be city forces doing it in-house.
Okay.
It was for materials, and then if there are any contractors that would be necessary, besides working in partnership with National Grid, and I do believe there was an electrical union that was going to be helping contribute some time to the project. If there is anything that's necessary, DPW would work to do the proper procurement process. It may be for, I don't know if it would be site work, or, but for now, there's some money allocated in the estimating, or I'm sorry, with the quotes, that allows for fill various materials. If our forces can't do that in-house, I believe the DPW director would be in that role to work on the red notes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Alderman McCall?
One, I think we've talked about Fornice and the need to make some upgrades there. I mean, one of the things that I've had people ask me about is, well, why are you doing this, or why don't you use the ARPA funds for that? And I think that part of what people don't understand in our community is exactly what we can use ARPA funds for and what we can't, and so they're, because of, I think they think sometimes that maybe that's not the best use of things, thinking that we could put it towards salaries or different things, and not really realizing that those monies cannot be utilized for that. So I don't know if there's some way to kind of put a, either a document together, kind of saying, you know, here's what we look to use our ARPA funds for, because we have talked about it, or here's what we are, and some of the things that it can't be, because I think that many residents are under the assumption we can use it for many things that we are unable to.
Okay. Yeah, fair point. Anything else? I guess I would just make the statement that, you know, I think we're doing a bang-up job upgrading our parks. We've made that a priority, certainly over the last, I would say, five or six years, and I fully welcome any funding that comes from Cat County for the use of our parks. With that being said, I'm, I guess I would prefer to see $400,000 go towards something that would create a new demand, something that the city doesn't currently have. And, you know, all our parks need those upgrades, but whether it's a skate park, whether it's a teen center, whether it's a, expands a fishing pond and have fishing dirt bees, I don't know. I guess I feel like that this money could have gone towards something to create a whole new avenue of creating marketability for our city. Now, with that being said, I support this. I hope the county, I welcome the money from the county. Again, if they want to invest in the land, I'll happily accept it. And as we move forward, based on a conversation we had a while ago, hopefully, the grand scheme of the, well, the master plan for Fornice Park comes back with some really unique tenants. And I hope I'm wrong. I hope this creates like major tournaments and just makes the number of adults and adolescents that participate in baseball and softball explode in all the time. And I hope that's the case. Alderman McCall?
Speaking of opportunities for it, I do have to say, you know, I've had the opportunity to go down to, you know, one of the things they had, which did go into starting to be more towards where they need lights and stuff, is that there was a benefit there for, I'm going to probably get it wrong, but it was childhood cardiac issues and stuff. So, you know, I think that those are opportunities that perhaps our residents can take advantage of, you know, because now our season is shorter, too. Like, I was driving home last night, I'm like, it's seven o'clock, getting dark. You know, so I think, you know, marketing it towards some of those things that benefit in a different way to our community.
If I could just interrupt. So one of the things I did work with the county on was brainstorming to see if there was some thing that we could use it for our youth. However, there isn't, because how the county's ARPA funds came in, they claimed the revenue loss category. So I had to actually prove that it would be them providing and continuing a government service that they do now, which they do at our rec center, I'm sorry, where they're using Recreation Bureau, because of where those kids go during their summer program and the other programs that are held there on those fields. Otherwise, I couldn't do a new service or a new program, because how the revenue loss category is for them to follow their guidance and procurement and funding of projects with how their ARPA funds were. So I did try.
So just in layman's terms, so they're only able to spend ARPA funds on existing programs? Is that?
They, they did, the county did their ARPA funds under the revenue loss category. So I had to prove in order to get county funds, that you have to use their funds on a government service that they would normally provide. And they are providing that service currently to the city, and they actually provide us, I believe it's like $15,000 annually.
Towards youth services?
Yeah, I have a memorandum from Chris Schweri explaining what it is they exactly provide, so I can make the connection with this project.
Okay.
So at that house.
For some of, for, because we have youth programs at the park?
Correct. At that specifically, and he outlined exactly what they do.
Okay. If we can integrate doing some sort of youth services and programs at night to take advantage of the lights, that would, that would be great, too. I would imagine most of those programs end in the daytime. If they could do, yeah, it would be awesome if we could start doing some evening programs and, I don't know, like, I don't know, lighting paper bags and letting them go up in the air. I don't know, right? Like, just something to take advantage of our fields and our facilities then at nighttime. So thank you for that update, Carrie. Appreciate it. Okay. Anything else? Alderman Witt?
Yes. No, just a couple weeks ago, Sonia pointed out, they had a benefit down there. They had a benefit in softball tournament for hospice also, and they need lots of parks, and it wasn't nice. So there's a lot of things going on there besides just the softball and baseball and Little League. And also, there are fishing tournaments, the reefs that have grown over the years, and I think we should be promoting more of that. And that's, like you had pointed out, I think those are things we just need to promote more. So I agree. But we also have to fix the parking lots.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? All right, all in the best. Motion?
No motion.
All right, motion is made by Alderman Witt.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Panis. All in favor?
反对
Opposed. Motion carried, and is referred to tonight's regular meeting for resolution. All right, nothing else for committee of the whole. I'll make a motion adjourned. Could I go second?
So second.
Seconded by Alderman Gonzalez. All in favor, I oppose. Or adjourned, and I'll call the order for a regular reading of the common council for Tuesday, September 13th, 2022. For the court, please call the attendance for all.
Alderman Witt?
Here.
Alderman Panis?
Here.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Here.
Alderman McCall?
Here.
Alderman Robinson?
Here.
Alderman Anastasia?
Here.
Dustin Crawford?
Here. Please rise for the invocation and the budge.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this community. In your name, we pray.
The prayer of the United States of America and to the holy persons stands my nation unto God in this world with the same grace of God.
Reading, correcting, and approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting.
The regular meeting of the Oleane Common Council was held on Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. Present were Alderman Crawford, Witt, Panis, Gonzalez, McCall, Anastasia, and Robinson. None to raffle.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting. Could I go second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Anastasia. All in favor, I oppose. Motion carried. Committee reports and unfinished council business?
None.
Communications from the mayor?
Special proclamation for ovarian cancer awareness month. Whereas ovarian cancer awareness month draws attention to one of the leading causes of cancer-related deaths in American women, whereas ovarian cancer often has no symptoms, and when symptoms appear, they tend to be associated with other conditions. Whereas screening is difficult, in fact, at this point in time, no reliable screening or early detection tests exist for ovarian cancer, whereas survival rates increase significantly with early detection. Therefore, in recognition that increased awareness is a very important tool in fighting against ovarian cancer, I, William J. Alio, mayor of the city of Oleane, on behalf of the common council, do hereby proclaim September as ovarian cancer awareness month in the city of Oleane. Furthermore, I recommend that Oleane residents be aware of the symptoms associated with ovarian cancer. In testimony thereof, I adhere unto, set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Oleane, the 13th day of September, 2022, for the city of Oleane, New York. Signed, William J. Alio, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you for that. I would like to welcome Mrs. Anne Serogus to approach the common council this time to receive the proclamation.
Thank you so much. Thanks for teaching me religion back in the day.
You're back, yeah.
They were my confirmation teachers back then. Just a few years ago, Dave, I had this great.
See, please. Special proclamation for childhood cancer awareness month. Whereas September has been proclaimed as childhood cancer awareness month and is signified by the color of gold, whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease for children under the age of 14, and each day 43 children in the United States are diagnosed with a form of cancer. Whereas treatment for childhood cancer is difficult, can last for years, and survivors may have significant treatment-related health issues. Whereas key to pediatric cancer survival is early detection, as is the courage of children fighting cancer, the strength of their families, and the dedication of healthcare professionals. Therefore, in recognition that public awareness will help support families and help advocate for additional research into causes and treatments of childhood cancers, I, William J. Alio, mayor of the city of Oleane, on behalf of the common council, do hereby proclaim September as National Childhood Awareness Month in the city of Oleane. In testimony thereof, I have here unto, set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Oleane, the 13th day of September, 2022, for the city of Oleane, New York. Signed, William J. Mayor. William J. Alio, Mayor.
Okay, thank you for that. And tonight, I would like to welcome Mrs. Janet Moser and ask if she would please approach the common council to receive the proclamation.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, please. Special proclamation for Alzheimer's Awareness Month. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is the most common form of dementia, a general term for memory loss, and other cognitive abilities serious enough to interfere with daily life, whereas Alzheimer's disease is not a normal part of aging, although the risk factor increases with age, there are approximately 200,000 Americans under the age of 65 who have been diagnosed with early onset Alzheimer's disease. Whereas Alzheimer's is a progressive disease that worsens over time, currently, there are treatments for symptoms, but no cure for the disease. Whereas a group of residents organized a music festival hosted by Woodside Tavern of the Range on August 27th, 2022. Proceeds benefited the American Alzheimer's Association and drew awareness to the disease. Therefore, in recognition of families who live with the effects of Alzheimer's disease and those who support them by raising awareness and funds for the Alzheimer's Association of Western New York, I, William J. Alio, mayor of the city of Oleane, on behalf of the common council, do hereby proclaim September, 2022, as Alzheimer's Awareness Month in the city of Oleane. In testimony thereof, I adhere unto, set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Oleane, the 13th day of September, 2022, for the city of Oleane, New York. Signed, William J. Alio, Mayor.
Okay, thank you then, Mr. Clerk. Our guest is not here tonight to receive this proclamation, but I wanted to reference in regards to Alzheimer's awareness, and everyone, probably most everyone has a family member that's been affected by this horrible disease. I came across an interesting study in regards to the onset of dementia. A recent study, people between the ages of 40 and 79 who took 10,000 steps per day were 50% less likely to develop dementia and early onset of Alzheimer's within a seven-year period, according to that study. And so, as we continue to try to make Oleane more walkable, those who were able to take a walk at over 40 steps a minute, to walk with purpose, were able to cut the risk of dementia by 57%. So I just wanted to share that with the council. Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. All right, miscellaneous communications?
None.
City official reports?
None.
Do we want the report of the city auditor, not handed out in August 2022? All right, how about for both legislation and referrals? Got a long list here for you.
PL number 93-22 by President Crawford, referred to the regular meeting Tuesday, September 13th, 2022, for resolution by council president. PL number 94-22 by Mayor Alio, referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, September 13th by council president. PL 95-22 by Alderman Anastasia, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, September 13th, 2022, for resolution by council president. PL number 96-22 by Mayor Alio, referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, September 13th, 2022, by council president. PL number 97-22 by Mayor Alio, referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, September 13th, 2022, by council president. PL number 98-22 by Mayor Alio, referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, September 27th, 2022, by council president. PL number 99-22 by Mayor Alio, referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, September 27th, 2022, by council president. PL number 100-22 by Alderman Witt, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, September 27th, 2022, for resolution by council president. PL number 101-22 by Alderman Witt, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, September 13th, 2022, for resolution by council president.
Okay. Before I open it up, the public county, I would like to give an opportunity to any of the aldermen make a statement at this time. Alderman Witt?
Thank you, Alderman Crawford. I just want to thank Anne Serogus for decorating our neighborhood. You did a great job, and I think, you know, it's amazing, you just assume people know about ovarian cancer, childhood cancer, and I had several people ask me what the benefits were for it. So it gave me an opportunity to educate people. So thank you for doing a great job of decorating, all the way down to the hospital and all the way back. So it looks great. The other thing I just wanted to share with the council, we all know about what happened at JCC last week with the gentleman with the taser, and I had a young girl that actually lives in my ward, and she just wanted me to thank our police partner for being there and just making them feel safe, even though I don't think they ultimately caught the person. But I just wanted to share that with our friends.
Thank you. Any other? Alderman McCall?
So I'm not, I'd have a, Alderman Panis had brought this up about tents in the backyard. I believe Wright, you sent out the email on. So I've had the same thing with one of my residents on South Second, just expressing concerns about having people that are not his lecys, if you will, setting up shop and actually having a tent, and it sounds like some illicit drug activity in the back. And so I guess I'm just, I guess I would ask that if there's anyone in my ward that they've had similar issues, because if we've had a few, a couple, I'm guessing it's not isolated incidents, we have issues with homelessness in the city, and we know that, and we need to look to see what, where we need to partner with agencies, because like you said, Alderman Panis, you don't want somebody who's down on their luck to be out, but how do we help rectify that and prevent that? And particularly with the resident in my area that there was some drug activity, and how do we, you know, how do we support landlords who are willing and interested in making Oleane a healthier, better place to live? And along with that is, you know, looking to see which houses we have that, you know, might otherwise be knocked down and stuff that, you know, we might be able to rehab through partnering with some of the local landlords that we know are interested in making the city a better place. And then lastly, looking to see what we might do with, I was talking earlier about the street sweeping, because it comes through in the middle of the night, and we've had a few residents that have complained about not having off-street parking. And I guess I didn't realize how much not, how many houses didn't have parking, but people being ticketed, and, you know, clearly, we want our streets to be clean, but is there a way to maybe look to do that during the day when people are at work, so that there's less opportunity for cars to be on the street, which means people will be happier, because apparently, you can't park your car on the subway. A couple of residents have found out. So just looking to see if maybe there's something we can do to take a look at when that is, because not every resident is near a city parking lot where they can easily and readily move their cars.
Okay. Well, I would highly encourage you to, as long as I've been on the council, that kind of rears its head, and I would encourage you to sit down with our new DPW director and see what his thoughts are on that arrangement. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, it is an inconvenience, and as our driveway's kind of been busy this past summer and blocked up, don't you just have to kind of park around the corner? Like, I mean, yeah, it's an inconvenience, you have to remember. And there have been plenty of times where I've run out at 2:00 a.m., because I wake up and I hear the street sweeper and I get in the car, and I, right, I just drive three houses down around the block. So, you know, there's got to be something that can be done. There's got to be some, I feel bad for residents when they don't have driveways. That's always, I've got two in my ward, and that's what I hear, right? It's like they want special dispensation. But maybe there is a better way. Maybe there's a better timing issue that, you're right, that maybe we haven't really considered that. But I would encourage you to have that conversation with Director Thompson.
Most of the laws have changed. I always thought on street sweeper nights, you're allowed to park in the subways, but you have to have your vehicle removed off the subway by seven or eight in the morning. I don't know if that...
So that is what one of my residents thought, but got ticketed on there, because apparently, a neighbor called and...
Because I always thought on street sweeper nights, you're allowed on the subways. And so if he did get a ticket, and if the car was removed at the proper time, I would ask the mayor to look into that, because he can void that ticket.
So it was a parking ticket that you needed to void. Did you say call the mayor's office?
Absolutely.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the public county's statement?
The public county portion of a common council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their
All right, Mr. Clerk, will you please read public comment statement?
The public comment portion of a county council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, voice their concerns, or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, county council members, and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their office.
Okay, at this time, I would like any member of the public to approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will have final comments. Anyone? Anyone? No one wants to talk about what three confirmations to the non-courts? At this time, I would call public comment close. On the financing bills?
None.
Resolutions?
Resolution number 91-22, PL number 95-22. Resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from Capital Fund Number 213, American Rescue Plan Act, to newly created Capital Fund Number 216, War Vets Park Splash Park.
Okay, this was, this is the second installment. If you recall, the $500,000 came from the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan monies. We received them in two sums, one last year and then one this past July. And so the idea was to split up those payments. This is that second payment to make a total of $500,000 in the capital fund for the War Vets Splash Park upgrades. And I want to thank Alderman McCall for pointing out something that, yep, has come up in the past. The ARPA funds have a list of criteria, what you can spend and what you can't spend it on. And you can't spend it on budget or operating items, so things that you have to pay every single year. One-time upgrade that will help to increase tourism to your community, that's certainly one thing that you can spend it on. So, I wanted to just let you guys know, myself and Director Thompson met with Phil Kudbiong, because he's at NACOM this week, but we just had a meeting with Clerk Patterson Lee, our project manager on the project with Vortex. All the parts and pieces have been ordered. The delivery date of that, we're going to have to store them because the elevations and most of the equipment that we see will be installed in the springtime. But we're getting pretty close to starting the demolition. Is that what your understanding is there, Director Thompson?
Yes, I'm just waiting on the final plans, so we do our final plan review, but they're looking at delivery for the main items to start coming in on the 29th of November. And then during the winter, the plan is to do the demolition, and then start off and do the fixtures, the water features in the spray, that's the plan.
And so another thing that was brought to our attention was now between, I think, our group here, DPW, our engineering team, project managers, and now the county health department have to work together to go over all of the requirements. Water parks are mandated and regulated by New York State, and they have been since 2007, I think. Requires ultraviolet purification and a series of purification and disinfecting mechanisms. And so I believe we're going to be maybe working with our old friend Bob Ray over there at County Health Department to go over those features. They've got to sign off on everything, so. Just giving you guys an update. Any comments or questions, Alderman Witt?
Yeah, I was curious, maybe Len could tell us, what is our balance left in the ARPA funds for this year?
Unallocated ARPA funds.
$36,000, I believe.
For, now, last year is done, so that's just what we have left this year.
Last year, I think we had $9,000 left from last year.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
So a little over 100.
Yeah, but I can give you the right number tomorrow, just not right now.
Okay, I was just curious.
You said 36,000, right? From this year, and 9,000 from last year. Okay.
Okay, thanks.
But I'm not too positive that's a quick number to have.
Could you follow up on that? No, she hasn't emailed it.
No, I would.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Anyone else? All right, seeing no other questions, I'll go ahead and sponsor. Second, second by Alderman Gonzalez. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution number 92-22, PL number 94-22, by Alderman McCall, seconded by Alderman Witt. Resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from General Fund Contingency to line item 5110.412.
Okay, talked about this a little bit ago. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution number 93-22, PL number 95-22, by, I'm sorry, authorizing installation of a street light on National Bridge Pole Number 6-1 on West Fall Road.
Okay, we talked about this last week, and Alderman Anastasia brought this to our attention. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Anastasia, would you like to sponsor?
I'd like to sponsor.
Okay. Get a second, please?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Witt.
Due to my absence last week due to the death of my dad, I'd just like to thank Chairman Robinson for allowing Kelly Carlson to address the committee and for you guys approving that last week.
Thanks for having me, from end to end. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution number 94-22, PL number 96-22, by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Panis. Resolution to create capital fund for the Hornets Park project.
Okay, any final comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number 95-22, PL number 97-22, by Alderman Anastasia, seconded by Alderman Gonzalez, to authorize the mayor to sign and submit an application to Cataragus County for ARPA funds in the amount of $400,000 for lighting upgrades and installation at Hornets Park.
Okay, so I just want to make a clarification. So that, those sponsors were for a previous grant application, not grant application, previous resolution that was submitted, what, a month or two ago, when there was $350,000 based on estimates. So now that he updated, the county would request that we have an updated resolution for them. This goes off of these sponsors from earlier today. Which were?
Witt and Panis.
Yes.
Okay.
Witt and Panis.
Witt and Panis. For both of them?
94-22 should be Gannus and McCall.
Oh, so 94-22, for the record, was Panis and McCall.
No, 92, 94-22 was McCall and Witt. 96 and 22 was Panis and McCall. 97-22 was Witt and Panis.
See, I've got, are we looking at PLs or are we looking at resolution numbers?
Looking at PLs from the previous agenda.
Resolution 94-22 should be Gannus and McCall.
So Resolution 94-22?
Gannus and McCall.
PL?
PL.
PL 96-22 is Panis and McCall.
Resolution...
95-22, PL 97-22 is Witt and Panis. Witt and Panis, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry, everybody.
All right.
Do we need to amend the section, the description, where it mentions the $350, or $350,000 for the lighting upgrades?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, can I, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules. Would you like a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Robinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, so then I'm going to go ahead and just make a motion to amend Resolution 95-22, PL 97-22, to read Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Panis, and then on the very last paragraph, ARPA funds in the amount of $400,000 rather than $300,000. Anything else in this? Are those the correct numbers, 180, 125, and 94?
Yes.
Those are the correct?
Yes.
And those add up to $400,000?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. All right, I made that motion, would you like a second?
Yes.
Second by Alderman McCall, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is good to go there. All right, any final comments, questions?
John?
Yes.
I'm afraid Sarah is supposed to ask.
Sir, one thing?
Yes, I got the calendar for you. From last year, ARPA fund, we have $9,195 left. And from this year, it's $139,74. Mostly $150,000.
Definitely a good business now.
It's not in your mail, it's the land.
We're in the middle of doing something here, ladies, and you're just like...
Getting it done.
Get the job done, right?
Man! Because you know what, as soon as I hit this, yeah, it was out the door. So that's, it's like, you know what? Okay, so we're good to go on this resolution. Any questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number 96-22, PL number 101-22, to authorize the installation of deer crossing signs on Constitution Avenue and Genese Street.
Okay, this one we broke last week. Any comments or questions?
John, I'm just going to reiterate that, you know, I drove the road and confirmed the 35 miles per hour, and I'm not for putting up signs. If you clip a deer doing 35, then you weren't paying attention. So that's my take.
Down with the signs?
Down with the signs for me.
Deer can't even read signs anymore, right?
Right.
Well, I will say after we left last week to Alderman Gonzalez, going down West Henley, a deer practically decided to tag me, and down Constitution. And I like to think I was paying attention. I'm like, I just think there's more deer. I don't know either that or I have deer attract on there. Right? Yeah, it is.
Maybe we should revisit the problem rather than the signs.
We tried that, and it didn't go anywhere.
Well, if they would follow the signs.
You guys made the city walk, but all the deers are just walking around.
Again, again, though, to Alderman Panis's point, if you're, if you're going the speed limit and you're not on your phone, not saying you were.
Of course not, there would be problems.
Right. And you hit a deer, that's your fault, right? If there's some kind of thing that helps us sleep at night because we put up a sign, I'm fine, whatever. You know what I mean, like it's a sign. I will say that if we get to putting up signs everywhere we've ever seen a deer, they lose their effectiveness. We don't want to empower the deer to think they can just cross anywhere.
I agree, I think he should sponsor something like that.
No, no, in fact, I am stringently against the deer culling notion either, too. I will fight that even as a citizen.
You're against that?
Yeah, that's a bad idea.
What are you going to, that's a separate conversation?
Separate conversation.
Okay.
If we're going to do that, then we might as well start to get the wood chipper out for the cats, too, so. That's the Dory.
It's like Kevin Dory's here.
I know. Hey.
All right.
Wild card, 15 minutes to go.
So should we just sponsor for this?
I'll sponsor.
All right, just sponsor. Will you need a second? Dave, catch up, man. That was, no, Panis being sponsored, that's... Is there a second? Okay, all right. All right, so Resolution 96-22, this might be the front page of the paper tomorrow. This might be break down to, I don't know.
Only the deer can read.
4-3 margin, I don't know, I don't know which way it's going to swing.
Controversies.
Rock, paper, scissors.
All right, any other comments or questions? On the deer's crossing sign, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
No.
Alderman Gonzalez?
No.
Alderman McCall?
No.
Alderman Robinson?
For the sake of safety, yes.
I swayed.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
I've never had a deciding vote like this.
President Crawford.
The pressure right now.
I did that for you, for you.
The pressure's on, John.
It's like the voice.
No!
Okay, I'll let my constituents know.
Deer can't read signs. Get off your phones.
That's right.
The resolution fails.
Contact New York State and say, why are you wasting money putting deer signs?
I agree. What does the, what do they do? Do they?
Just say?
I'm going to, I'm going to have to contact DPW to find out if there are actual studies that, like, do they, do those signs prevent major accidents? Putting up a deer crossing sign?
The more signs you put up, you will become blind.
Well, and I personally, I slow down not even when I see a deer sign, because I know they're coming.
Well, that's all, it's funny that we bring this up, because I think the day after the council last week, there was a radio, the guys on the radio were talking about a study, and 57% of people didn't know how to recognize a construction sign, like construction ahead.
You know, in all seriousness, I wouldn't say I hit a deer. A deer hit me on Constitution like 15, 20 years ago. Would a sign have made a difference? Absolutely not.
And I'm going to say the same thing, both those deer that I saw, because I was thinking, oh, God, of course, right? I see them, but I don't, like, I know those are residential streets. I know what the speed limit was, I wasn't going crazy, and I don't know if that would have made a difference for me. And so you swayed me.
Please, can't cross the sign. Okay, how many comments?
14 to go.
Could I get a second?
Second.